For your attendance, look forward to another good meeting. Council, you will see a letter from me that's marked confidential in front of you. Those are some dates that I'd ask you to hold as we move forward with the process of selecting our next city manager. Those will probably be, if things go well, would be interview dates. We have the applications to be turned in by November 10th. We will, after that date, probably have some specially called closed sessions to go through applications to get to the point of those three dates which would be held for interviews. I hope everyone will find that amicable. I will just say I'm doing the very best that I can with the help of my great vice mayor. Right, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
That's a beautiful voice.
Also, Mr. Dyer has asked me to let you know that we have scheduled Secretary of Transportation, Harvey Lane, for November the 24th. And basically, that is our four o'clock meeting, which is, as you know, a workshop. And it appears that we're trying to dedicate that whole thing to Light Rail. And so, anyway, I wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My pleasure there, Bobby. Okay, let's get started. The first thing, the city council's briefing will be the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation presentation. Mr. Spoor, you want to make the introductions?
Well, this is an item that several council members had asked for, an update on what VB-CDC was doing regarding some efforts to get more housing built, not only in Virginia Beach, but throughout the area. So, it's, we invited them to come over and, I don't know if, Addie, are you starting off on this?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're delighted to have you, Addie. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you. First of all, I'm probably one of the few people you'll ever see come before you that provides services that will be encouraging you to use us more. So, that's pretty much my theme for today. You know, with fiscal challenges facing the city, facing the state, and facing the nation, Virginia Beach CDC is uniquely positioned to do more good with less. Those of you who were around 29 years ago, was anybody around 29 years ago on the board?
Go easy.
I think it was my 50th birthday.
Well, you will remember that our mission, our original mission, was to provide affordable housing opportunities for low and medium income families. And Mary Kay, my, the founder, founding ED, and for 28 years, made that dream come true. We have housed over 6,200 residents in Virginia Beach. We have provided supportive services to 8,000 residents. And I think those numbers are very conservative because we're just beginning to take a look at our technology. So, I believe that those are very conservative numbers. Over the last 29 years, you'll be pleased to note that Virginia Beach CDC has become financially independent. Ninety percent of our operational funds come from the renting of homes that we own. I was hired last August and received some challenges, some goals from the board, which our board chairman, Chris, is going to speak about in just a moment. But what I will say to you is that my overall charge was to position Virginia Beach CDC for success. I was just talking to our intake coordinator today, and I asked her, I said, "How often do you," I know often I get calls, "how often do you get calls from people who are literally in the street, either in their car or sleeping in a park?" And then I asked, "I want families." She told me that we could house two families a week, two families a week. She gets about two calls a day. And when she vets them, we'd probably end up housing, providing shelter, et cetera, for two families a week. I get calls every day. The need is there. So, what we did as a board and as a staff was take a look at how could we position ourselves to do more for more people? And the answer to that lay in our partner corporation called Second Act Communities. Second Act Communities have been around since, I think, 1993. Since that time, it has shared executive staff, so that there are three of us who work on both corporations. All the rest of the staff in Second Act do not work for VB-CDC. They work only for Second Act, and they do all the day-to-day operations. This is how I get my nails done and my hair done, and I'm able to still run both companies. So, we do have separate staffs. Our projects, we often get asked about, "Well, how are you financing these projects?" Most of you know that we do apply for grants, and we do design bill, we do rehab reuse, all kinds of projects. But Second Act specifically, if you know design bill, those projects serve as your collateral. Second Act has a separate board, it's a separate 501(c)(3), a separate corporation. So, any projects that Second Act is a partner in, there is no liability to VB-CDC unless it's a partner, if that makes any sense. So, it would take both of us being involved in order to, both companies being involved to have any liability on that part. So, as I said in the beginning, we want to do more. And as a CDC, it was a wise decision. I wasn't here 29 years ago when you created VB-CDC, but I can tell you that when I saw this job posting having, had worked in a housing authority, and knowing the limitation, the bureaucracy of a housing authority, it made my heart leap because you can do so many more wonderful things for people using a CDC. It's lean, it's flexible, and this CDC is very well managed and very well financed. So, we want to know what we can do to assist you even more. We have had some board changes, and I understand there were some questions about that concerning the board changes. I just kind of wanted to run down the list a little bit and tell you what's going on in case you had not heard. Ann Crenshaw, who has become one of my dear friends here since I've been here, she's given us a ton of time, lunchtime, phone time, anything that we've needed. She, I have talked to Ann about her resignation. I cannot give you a specific reason. So, those of you who know her, you're probably best talking with her individually, but I told her that I will let you know that we had a good, long conversation. Carolyn McPherson, who was a prized member of our team, moved out of state, sold her house here and went to be with family. Bob Williams' term is up in December, and so we will be, you've already, I think, put forth a name for replacing him. Elsie Barnes wanted me to tell you that she resigned due to an issue not related to the board direction or leadership. So, once again, I'm leaving personal, personal, and if you know Elsie, I'm sure she would welcome a conversation. We are going to have one more opening in December. I don't want to catch up with you. Jill, I should have told Ruth this earlier, but Jill Eyler's term is ending. And so, we will be asking you for another board member in December. At this time, I would like to get, well, let me first introduce, have the board introduce themselves, and I want Chris to come up and give a few remarks. Let's start on this side with board members to go around. Do you give your name and which board you're on?
Richard Bymiller, VB-CDC.
Denise Howe, VB-CDC.
Coming here, I'm on the VB-CDC and Second Act Communities Board.
Dr. Grant, Second Act.
Wanda Cooper with VB-CDC.
Jim Banks with VB-CDC and Second Act.
Alex Kalasinski with VB-CDC.
We have two staff members here. We have Jessica Guglielmo, who is our chief operating officer for both corporations. And we also have Jerry Turner, who runs board relations, board liaison work for us. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and then if you have any questions, I'd be glad to come back up and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chris. We welcome you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us all from both organizations. My name is Chris Beal, I think most of you know that. I am the chairman of the board for Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. I've been on the board for seven years and chairman for the last two and a half. I'm also a board member of Second Act Communities, and I've been on that board for four years. Before, well, in order to tell you where we're going, I want to step back a few years and tell you where we've been in the last three or four years. Mary Kay Horchewski, as our previous CEO, executive director, had tasked her chief financial officer, Casey, to determine with board approval what we needed to do as an organization to become financially self-sufficient on an income/cash flow basis. And we currently have about 400, a little over 400, housing units in the city of Virginia Beach. And doing an analysis of what it would take, how many more units it would take for us to be financially independent or self-sufficient, with all the overhead that goes with additional units and additional financing costs and debt service cost and other overhead and growth that would be associated with new units, we determined that we would need 454 new units to be completely financially self-sufficient on a cash flow/income basis. And obviously, with 400 current units, that's doubling the size of the organization. In order to achieve 454 new units, we determined at that time, this is about two years ago, that we would need to have multiple projects in the pipeline simultaneously. If you think back, five years ago, we had a potential project in Kempsville. It was about 50 units. There was the "Not in My Backyard Syndrome." The project died. We had all our eggs in that one basket, and it was 50 units. And it took us another two or three years before Cedar Grove came online, which was only 36 units, and now all our eggs were in that basket. And that was a nice jump forward, but it wasn't a major impact on the needed growth that we determined as a board that was necessary. Just last year, we had the Rosemont, you know, go two more years in the future, which is last year. Rosemont Crossing was a potential project. "Not in My Backyard Syndrome" came up again. The project was terminated. That was potentially 50 more units. So, in the last five years, we've had three projects. One has been successful, and 36 new units. That makes it very difficult to achieve the financial independence that we sought as a board. And that was under the previous executive director. Now, she had to resign and move out of state to be with family. There was a grandchild with a health need and other grandchildren. She and her husband were both retired, moved out of state. We began a search committee. For our search policy, we have to have an odd number of board members on, odd number of members on the search committee. And one of those search committee members has to be appointed by the city manager. I talked to Jim. He appointed Cindy Curtis. I, as the leader of the search committee, chose the six most senior board members on our board, which was the chairman, myself, the vice chairman, Tony, treasurer, which at that time was Jim Banks, sorry. Our two senior, two most senior board members and our past board president, board chairman. And then Cindy Curtis being the seventh, gave us that odd number. We went through a national search with the assistance of the city's human resources department. Their senior executive recruiter for executive positions of the city was assisting us in the search through Cindy. We had a national coast-to-coast search for several months. We posted it everywhere that the city posts, you know, the national searches for executive talent. And we had over 80 resumes come in. We had several meetings. We combed through the resumes carefully. We ended up selecting a top five candidates that we wanted to have a first look at. We flew those candidates into Virginia Beach. Travelman Sanders at Town Center was nice enough to let us use their boardroom, all-day interviews with the five candidates, and it really came down to two. We had two excellent candidates. And when we first met Addie, she was a great candidate early in the day, and we thought we found our person. And then, at the end of the day, we had another great candidate walk in the door, and we thought, "Well, this is a tough decision now." Because we thought it was going to be a slam dunk, and it wasn't. So, we ended up putting both Addie and the other candidate through a Caliper exam, a background check, and a second round of interviews using Skype. And after much vetting, much discussion, we ended up making the choice to choose Addie because of her energy and her vision, and that's what we were looking for. As a board, we knew that we had to become financially independent, financially self-sufficient at least. And in order for that to happen, we had to have more energy, and we had to go to the next level in terms of a pipeline of multiple simultaneous projects. We can't do the old method of, "Oh, your eggs in one basket every three years with a one-out-of-three success rate." It'll take a millennium to get 454 units under the old method. So, the new method is now multiple projects, multiple, multiple projects in the pipeline, simultaneous initiatives, and growing the organization, you know, with, knowing that one out of three or two out of three are going to succeed, multiple projects simultaneously. We're also looking beyond the borders of Virginia Beach, which is where our sister organization comes in, Second Act Communities. There's more land outside of Virginia Beach than there is inside of Virginia Beach. There's more need outside of Virginia Beach than there is inside of Virginia Beach. They provide an opportunity in Second Act to share the cost of the existing organization and to, you know, fund and provide resources in a partnering situation where we work together, but, you know, we work exclusively in the city of Virginia Beach, but they can bring in, you know, talent and grants and projects to help us. So, our goal and our desire in hiring Addie this past year was to elevate the organization to a higher level, to achieve the financial independence and self-sufficiency that we had set out under the previous executive director to accomplish. So, that is, that is where we are, and then that is where we're excited to be. And Addie's done a great job of energizing the group, revitalizing the initiative, and putting a new emphasis and focus on affordable housing in this market, and special needs housing like disabled veterans and mentally handicapped adults and other special needs.
Thank you very much.
So, she really was a slam dunk, right?
She really was. And we're happy that she's here, and we're pleased to see what she's doing.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess I've got one simple one. I thought you all were financially independent already.
We are. We are. What my chair was saying is that we want sustainability. So, we're in a situation, I was not there when this was created, but I've seen the numbers, that based on, our income is primarily something like 95% rental income.
Right.
You all who business know you've got to have diverse income streams to help with the ebb and flow. So, that calculation has to do with being sustainable five, six, seven years from now. We are financially independent. There's a question about the sustainability under the model that we were using, looking five to 10 years ahead. So, my job was to create that. I think Chris has a question.
I can just interject. You know, we've been filling the gap with developer fees, which is, in a private sector, would be called profits. From our major projects, you know, after all the funding is in place, there is a developer fee that is returned to the organization, which is basically our savings account. We've been using that savings account to get the other 5% that we need to fill in the gaps, and it's going to be sustainable. But should we never do another project, that savings account will eventually run dry. Our developer fees won't last forever. They're one-time hits.
I guess my thing is, I thought when these properties were being bought, you had grants and so forth, and basically, they covered the debt service along with a reserve fund for maintenance. Am I wrong on that?
That's true, but there's also other overhead that the organization incurs that doesn't cover.
Absolutely. For the operation of the business, there is other overhead that's incurred. You know, as you know, here in the city, benefits, insurance is going up.
I get it. Yeah, I was looking at it.
The projects are fine, but there's the other overhead that's general administrative.
All right. Other questions or comments? We thank you so very much.
Tom Saniero might have had a hundred.
I was just going to add, sustainability is one thing, but when I joined the organization, it was clear to me, the mission over a period of time, doing 400 single-family homes, was a long period of time. It didn't really make a dent in the mission that we were given, which is to develop affordable housing for the community here.
Well, I mean, my takeaway is, I mean, you can do two a month as far as providing housing?
No, 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 no. These were, what I was saying, I was indicating the need and that we get.
I thought the need was greater than that.
These are people we can't serve. That's right. These are people we cannot serve. They don't fit in any category of any program, and we don't currently have space for them, which is why we need to do more.
But Addie, correct me, it's just not homeless people.
No, no, it is not.
Affordable, it could be teachers and police, and so it's.
Disabled veteran.
It's a huge audience that, you know, as we've discussed, doing 50 or 100 unit complex that could make a dent in the issues for the city is really where we're trying to head.
And we have to have the funds right now. There is a unit we're looking at, an apartment complex here. We have to wait for a grant. We have no money until the grant comes, the government grant comes through. What we want is to be able to have some funds whereby if we see a piece of land we want, we can engage.
Are you confident you're going to get the grant?
Before we would do that, we'd be confident we're going to get, confident we're going to get the grant, yes.
Because, I mean, if you're confident you're going to get a grant, we'll help you in the interim. I mean, we see the need here. I mean, you know, I mean, we want to help.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you so very much. VB Kids Care, Mr. Spoor.
Mayor, members of council, this is a really good news item, and Donette Smith is here to introduce this topic. It's a partnership between the city and CHKD to provide care for some of our foster kids, and we think it's a real grand opportunity for the Department of Human Services as well as CHKD, and most importantly, our kids. But, Donette, you ready to roll?
I am.
Donette, we're glad to have you.
I'm glad to be here.
We sent this out last Friday in the packet.
Hello, everybody. We welcome each and every one of you. And Donette, we really welcome you now.
Well, Mayor, thank you so much, Mr. Spoor, and city council, for having me here today. It is with great delight that I bring some good news about the department and what we're doing. And I have been, for the last year and a half, partnering with CHKD around care for children and foster care. And before I get started, I want to introduce to you the team that is going to actually be speaking to you today. Dr. Rudolph Freeman, who is our medical director, Galen Thomas, who is my deputy director for social services, and most importantly, a very important partner and pediatrician, Doug Mitchell. He has graciously, through CHKD, agreed to partner with us on the care for children who are in foster care. But without me getting started, we have another very special partner here with us today, and that's Linda Monahan. Both Linda Monahan and Dr. Mitchell have been with us from the inception of the program. We're looking forward to a wonderful, wonderful partnership. And so, what I'd like to do at this time is to turn it over to Galen.
We welcome you.
Hello. Good afternoon. Again, I'm Galen Thomas, the social service deputy director. And, we're going to wait till the power part?
Yes.
I am going to give you guys an overview of the population of youth that will be served through this partnership with CHKD. And the population of youth that I'm speaking about has to do with foster care. DHS makes every effort to keep children with their families. So, our goal is to try to maintain families in terms of providing community-based services, providing services in their home, providing services for the child in the family. So, our goal is to make sure that kids are kept safe in their home. But when that's not possible, if a child is unsafe, there's concern about their safety in terms of being in the home, there's allegation of abuse and neglect, then we have to make sure that the child comes into our care. Children come into care for certain reasons. One, because they're unsafe, and that there's an immediate concern regarding their safety. When that happens, a child comes in care either through 24 hours of, I'm sorry, they come into care, once they come into care, they come in, can you kind of move it to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. They come into care, and they're placed in a 24-hour setting. And that setting either is with a resource family, a group home, or residential or independent living. So, when a child is unsafe because of abuse and neglect, they're going to come in and have that type of setting. All our foster kids are children who are under the age of 18. So, no child over the 18 are placed in any of these settings. We try to provide individual comprehensive services to meet the needs of the youth. Our goal is to make sure that the permanency needs of youth are being met in terms of making sure that they have some type of stability and that it's not a temporary setting. We're trying to make sure that there's a permanent setting for all our kids. So, one of the things that we, can you go back? One of the things that we want to make sure is that we're strengthening families, protecting children, and ensuring permanent family or family connection. So, our goals are safety, permanency, and well-being. Right now, we have 234 kids that are in foster care. On the average, for the fiscal year 2015, we had 231 kids in foster care. 120 kids entered in foster care and 88 exited foster care. On the average, every month, about seven kids come into foster care. In the fiscal year 2016, currently, we have 234 kids that are in foster care. 41 for that fiscal year have entered since October 26, and 29 have exited foster care, meaning that when a child leaves foster care, it's because either they're being adopted, and right now, we have 61 kids with the goal of adoption, or because they have reached the age of 18 and they're going to exit foster care, or they may have gone to a relative placement. So, those are the reasons why kids exit foster care. With this initiative, our goal is to make sure that the well-being needs of kids are being met, meaning that we want to make sure that their educational, mental health, and medical needs are being met for all these kids. And that's the reason why we're having this partnership with CHKD, is to ensure that all kids who come into care within 24 hours are receiving medical attention, and that those kids who are in care also within 30 days are receiving comprehensive medical examinations. Can you go? I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Freeman. Were there any questions for me? I know I went kind of fast and was kind of nervous, too.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I have one. Can you go back to that slide a second? The goal of adoption, it looks like the whole fiscal year 15 was 56, but in, what, four months of 16, there's 61. Does that mean we're going to have 120?
No. So, right now, we have a total of 61 kids who have the goal. So, as they're, reach their permanency in terms of kids are being adopted, that's what that means. So, 61, right.
That 56 is probably in that 61.
Yes. So, 61 right now have that goal of adoption. Not all of them will reach adoption in terms of being able to be adopted, but they have that goal, that permanency goal of adoption.
What percentage of these kids are therapeutic foster care versus mainstream?
I don't have that number, but I would say the majority of them are in some form of therapeutic foster care. And then also, meaning that they're with a foster family, because of their special needs, they're getting like special monies to take care of them. So, I would say probably the majority of them are in some form of a foster home. And that foster home will probably be adopting them, that foster parent, the majority of them. We only have a handful of kids that are residential that have the goal of adoption, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Dr. Freeman, we welcome you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As Galen mentioned initially, it's my hope to try to provide for you an understanding of not only why we feel this important to have this initiative, but also why CHKD. And I think a large part of it stems from us being very deliberative in selecting a partner that we believe can deliver when providing comprehensive care for the kids that we plan to serve. Research and public policy has clearly identified that many of these kids who are involved in foster care have significant problems as it relates to medical issues, psychological issues, developmental issues. It's important that we provide a framework of providing care for them that addresses all of those things in a meaningful way. The numbers are staggering. Many of these kids are victims of trauma, both in the traditional sense as well as in a therapeutic sense in terms of being victims of sexual, physical, and emotional abuse. Next slide, please. The large part of why we chose CHKD is because we both have a shared vision of what good care should be. Both Donette Smith and Dr. Mitchell had an opportunity well over a year and a half ago to have a brief introduction and realize that they were kindred spirits and wanting to provide the best care possible for the kids that are being served in this community. About a year ago, the team began to assemble and began to map out a game plan of how we were going to try to address these concerns. And I think we all were sitting around the table recognizing how much we all had the same kindred spirit of wanting to make sure the kids get good care, have easy access to the care. the care, make sure it's of the highest quality. Equally importantly, we all shared the same values. The care needed to be comprehensive. It needed to be holistic. We needed to address all of the various dimensions that we believe good care should incur. Lastly, we thought part of the reason that this deliberative partnership not only had strategic value for us, but again, we were partnering with what we believe to be the goal standard in this community in providing services to children. I had a previous life experience in working as a hospital medical director for one of the health systems in this region. And very often, our pediatric staff always commented, even though we were across the river, constantly commented that whenever we wanted to develop programs or services for children, look at CHKD as the benchmark. So we had that experience. Equally importantly, I had personal experience many years ago when my youngest son, who's now 33, required medical treatment at CHKD in their neonatal intensive care unit. And not only were I impressed at the time with the medical care that we received, my son received, but the caring that my wife and I achieved as well. So for us, it was a no-brainer. Good partner, benchmark, representing the state of what the best practice should be. And Dr. Mitchell is going to share with you what that will specifically entail.
We welcome you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Yeah. The, um, my pleasure to be here. This has been a fun process in getting to this point, and I'm thrilled to be able to share it with you. The way we take care of the kids today is good, but it's been become very clear to me over this conversation even before that, we can do a whole lot better than good. And we want to make that happen. The scenario up until this partnership is I've been in practice right down the street from here. I'm in general booth peds personally. And I see a lot of kids that have been in foster care. And they would arrive somewhere in the couple of weeks after they've been placed with a foster family. The foster family would say, we've been told to bring them to a pediatrician. I don't know anything about the child. That's really hard to provide good comprehensive care. It's nobody's fault. That's the system. That's the way it's been. But we can fix that and we can do better. And that's what this is, our goal is with this, is to provide standardized, comprehensive care in a pediatric medical home for these kids. We're going to, as they come into the, did you move ahead? So as they, as they first enter that process, the first goal is a very quick, rapid, within 24 hours, evaluation to make sure the child is safe. If they've already been identified with abuse, all that's already been taken care of through the Child Abuse Program, through CHKD, we're not interfering with that, not replacing that. I'm not a child abuse expert. I'm a general pediatrician, and that's how we're setting this up for us, to do that general pediatric care. Immediately, the authorization to treat. That's going to help because we stumble occasionally with having to track down a judge or track down the caseworker to get that authorization. So that's going to come right off immediately. Makes our life a whole lot simpler. If the child already has a pediatrician, the goal is for them to get that evaluation with their standing pediatrician. We don't want to do anything to interfere with an established patient-centered medical home. That relationship should go on. But if they don't have a pediatrician, if they're receiving their care by family practice or at the urgent cares, then they're going to be coming into one of the CHKD practices for these evaluations by a pediatrician, by a specialist in the care of children. If we're not available, it's a Saturday or Sunday to hit that 24 hours. As you're aware, CHKD has opened the first urgent care in Chesapeake with two more to open very, in the next year or so, in Virginia Beach. And those will be the backup plan for that initial safety evaluation to make sure there's no issues that need to be addressed immediately. And then, of course, if there's true urgent issues, then the CHKD emergency room. At the time of that first visit, we're then scheduling the comprehensive evaluation that needs to be within the first 30 days. And this is truly comprehensive. They'll be seen by a pediatrician. The department will gather every medical record possible, medical, educational, and mental health, and dental record possible, so we can truly take a comprehensive look at where that kid is coming from and what the issues are that need to be addressed. There'll be a full physical, we'll do vision and hearing, typical well-child sorts of things. Add in 100% of the time developmental questionnaires. We've got screening questionnaires to see whether they're delayed in their development, where do they stand, because the vast majority of them have problems that need to be identified. Not drug and alcohol testing, but there are screening questionnaires that we look and identify the high-risk behaviors for drug and alcohol abuse. All of them will have some laboratory testing to look for signs of TB or other infections or other congenital infections primarily for the babies. And then 100% of them will have a mental health evaluation. My partner in the mental health side, Stephanie Ossler, is prepared to do a comprehensive evaluation of all these kids within that first 30 days as well. That's something we've not done. We've really, as you probably have heard, mental health is a real shortage, primarily in, particularly in pediatrics as well, that we've got to address. And we're going to really make sure we address it in the kids that are in the foster care system. Make sure that they're caught up or get them, start getting their caught up on their vaccines and get them referred for dental care. The communication's got to be both ways. We need to do a better job of getting their records, and I need to do a better job of getting the communications back to the caseworkers and the foster parents about the issues and how we're addressing them. So we've got our electronic health record. That's the other reason for doing it within CHKD. They're seen in my office as a general pediatrician or my other general pediatric practices in Virginia Beach. If they're seen by a specialist or if they're hospital, we all have access to all of those records immediately. As they're seen in mental health, I'll have immediate access. So I can put it all together and provide, if you will, the captain of the ship as the general pediatrician for what we need to do for these kids. I will also, every time they're seen, we will be sending them home with, if you will, the departure summary or that instructions, if they got this vaccine, their height and weight was this. That will be sent back with the foster parents to communicate back to the caseworkers that are responsible for the child. You all are familiar with the Centerra MyChart or EChart or whatever they call it. CHKD has the same thing. We're going to set up so that the caseworkers are parents for their entire caseload. And so they will be able to go on to the electronic version of that for CHKD and look at all of the kids on their caseloads within that home, what we call a patient portal, to review records. In addition, Dr. Freeman has complete access to all of their records. He can only view, but he can go in and look at everything that's been done across the entire health system if more information is needed on any individual child.
Thank you very much.
So as you can see, I think what we have worked diligently to do is develop a very integrated process. Earlier, you saw a slide that talked about the American Academy of Pediatrics. Just this month, they issued a position paper that talked about the magnitude and scope of the problems facing foster kids in terms of their development, healthcare, and their development into adulthood. They have kind of identified a framework in which we need to move forward to execute this type of partnership. We, we not only are one of the few that have the ability to do this and have begun to work on implementing this, but we are going to exceed their own recommendations. They're talking about the first assessment within a city to our period, our benchmark is going to be 24 hours. So again, it's, again, an attempt to have an integrated delivery system. We need to make sure that the kids have timely access to care, that we are addressing all of their needs in a holistic fashion, mind, body, and soul, and that we're doing so in a very collaborative partnership. And I believe we have all the right partners in place to do just that. So we're welcome and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you so very much. Questions or comments? Shannon, Dan Rosemary?
This is, I'm assuming, then, the bill is paid for by Medicaid on behalf of the child? Is that, is that the?
My understanding for most of these kids, they have Medicaid. And occasionally, I've learned that some may have some additional third-party insurer as well.
Rosemary?
Yeah, I was going to ask about funding, but this is fantastic. These children need, they've been through a lot, and they deserve to have a level playing field with the other kids. I think it's wonderful that you partner. I love it.
Any other questions or comments? I'd go ahead, Emilio.
I'm saying two heads are better than one. And something like this is very, very much needed. So thank you for bringing that to the table.
I really want to thank you as well. This is great. But let me also say, if another city gets within 24 hours, make ours 12.
Yes, sir.
All right. For GME, it's always number one.
It's always about raising the bar, right?
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you so very much. We really appreciate it.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good to have you all here. All right. Pending planning items, we could get out here by 5:00.
I know, and I'm kind of excited.
Would everybody like that idea?
Great.
Sure, Barry can draw it out.
We're out here by 5:00.
Yes, sir. Ready, deedy.
Good afternoon. Hi, Se. I'm here for the glimpse. I have no theme today, but you have, I know. But we have one item on November 3rd and I think 11 items on November 17th. So the one item on November 3rd is the item you heard last week, is the monopole. Was a question about the location and the relationship to the neighborhood. And we have a lot of detailed information on that, but it's a 120-foot cell tower. And it's within about 55 feet of an adjacent property. The applicant has agreed to design the tower so it falls down in a 50-foot radius and has agreed to reach out to the adjacent property owners, because at the time when we were with you last week, we did not have documentation that they had discussed it with the adjacent property owners.
Has that been done?
Excuse me?
Has it been done?
No, it has not been done yet.
No problem.
They have not done that yet.
And I was talking with Karen before, and I was talking with the applicant. I just think maybe some readjusting on the site, if they are agreeable to it, can solve all the problems, so we're going to work on it.
Okay, great.
I got great faith in you all.
Okay. Just go to the, just for your information, this is a pretty good map, and it will come into play later today. This shows the five-mile stretch of Princess Anne Meadows, shows the location of the monopole, Christopher Farms, future roads, proposed London Bridge Extended, Southeastern Parkway, a lot going on in this area, and we will bring that up in a minute. But I'm going to skip right to the next one, unless you want to see lots of pictures of monopoles and plans. Jeez, Louise, let's keep going, keep going. All right. So that's, that's next week. You have one item. All right. November 17th, you have 11 items. All are approved by planning staff and the planning commission. Only one is controversial. That's not, and I'll get into that one, but.
Guess which.
Guess what it is. So onsite security academy is in the Bayside District, shows you where it is. And this is a conditional use permit. It's simply a use of a vocational school, which needs a conditional use permit. It's about 1,000 square feet, 20 students. It's, they have their class at nighttime. There's no significant parking problem, and they practice their firearms off-site, which is a critical issue that you need to be aware of. They're not going to be doing that. So, and we, we support approval of this item. There's plenty of parking here, and there's no opposition. Okay. Price's Holding LLC, this is an interesting one in that it is impacted by the Witch Duck Road expansion. We have worked closely with this property owner over a period of time as far as how much property is, is, is addressed in the, in the project. And the property owner did not want to move. The property owner wanted to stay in the area. And so we basically, they wanted to change their uses a little bit. They wanted to do some repair, and they wanted to do some, selling some cars in the location. So it's a very popular place, apparently, for inspections, car repair, transmission repair. They're going to clean up the site. They are not going to have a garden center. There was a garden center there. And they are going to propose, you can keep going. And this is the proposed improvements. And, oh, I was already there, sorry. We have lots of pictures.
What is it they want to do on that site, Barry?
They want to, where's the plan? They want to, they want to do car repair and car sales. That's what they want to do on the site. Currently, right now, they are doing both, correct?
Plus the garden.
Plus the garden center. The garden center's going away. So basically, this is legitimizing what they are doing and cleaning up the site and getting rid of the garden center.
Yep.
So I'm assuming this right-of-way dedication there, that's the part the city is taking for the expansion of the road?
I would just like to say that, I'm going to say, well over a year ago, the Price family came and met with me and was quite concerned about the city putting them out of business, which, because of the new road. The city has worked diligently with the Prices to the extent that they called me last week thanking the city for being able to save their business and accomplish the road project as well. So I thank the entire city staff for working so well to make, keep this company, every GME should have.
Okay. And moving on. M&amp;K Investments, this is at the intersection of Norfolk Avenue and Bird Neck Road. Some of you are probably very familiar with that. They have Chocfula Nuts Coffee there. So if you're a Yankee, that's the only place you can get it. Anyway, so they have some controversy over the current zoning in their B2 and B1. They want to put some new retail uses, which is primarily telephone wireless sales, which is currently not permitted in the B1. So this would consolidate their uses. There's no new restaurant proposed in here. And it also include the R75 parcel. They're purchasing that. They're purchasing that from the city. That was approved in August, and they would use that for overflow parking. There was one opposition, or not one opposition, one discussion from the adjacent property owner, and the planning commission basically told us, the staff, to make sure that we appropriately buffered and fenced the property and had that requirement to, to the operator. And so it isn't shown on here, but we would propose a fence in addition to the planting if that's what's desired by, by the neighbor.
Help me with that. Is that in the noise zone right now? That vigil piece, do we know?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Yeah, I say I don't think so. Yeah.
Well, and they've confirmed out that there won't be any more square footage in restaurants, so that makes it okay with the increase.
Okay. But does that help us take in something that was residential zoning?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Second shot. It wouldn't be the agenda if we didn't have a tattoo parlor on the agenda, so we have second shot in the Kemsfield District. It is in the area of Princess Anne Road and adjacent to the railroad right of way. This is a lease, so the owner maintains the building, so the use is a leased use. The applicant will renovate a 1,600-square-foot building, and I'll show you some improvements. And although it's not consistent with the Newtown Strategic Growth Area Plan, it's, it is interesting that if the, the plan does propose that that building stay in that area, assuming that there is a future park. So that is not going to be in my lifetime, but, you know, that is exactly what the future plan is. So this building, as it is, actually technically fits into the plan. This just shows you the site plan, and this shows you the building today. The front is actually not the worst part of it. The back is where there's a shed and a storage container, and the applicant has agreed that they will all be removed and the, the building will be restored to match the rest of the building. This is a elevation, and the tattoo is, does not meet the sign ordinance. That will not be part of the project.
That's good. That's really over the top.
That shows you some, all right. The big things, I get. So the recommendation of staff is to approve it, and it was supported by the planning commission. Jim Golden and Melissa Textor, Lynn Haven District, some of you are familiar with this issue if you have gotten lobster from the truck recently. So it is the area just over the, on the other side of the, the bridge on Gray Neck Road, and it is for three things. U-Haul rental facility, a food stand, which is lobster sales, and a bulk storage yard. The bulk storage yard came about when staff was out there inspecting the site, and so the applicant agreed to solve all these issues at one time. This is the map. The red rectangle is where the lobster sales would go. It's only a one-year use, because they are hoping to be in a brick-and-mortar building in, after a year. The other use is for the yellow. The other use is for the yellow, is for the parking of truck and trailers, and I believe it's only three maximum that can be parked out there. So, they will rent U-Hauls, and they will have the lobster facility. And it's, the lobster's sales are set up in the parking lot. This is an example of what it's like on the weekend. This shows the back of the building. You see there's containers back there, which are not consistent with the current, what's currently allowed. And they have agreed to apply for a bulk storage yard permit to allow that to happen. And right now, you can hardly see it, but yet it is not an approved use at this time until we go through this process.
Their lobster rolls are the best.
I know. I was going to say that, but I thought it was probably inappropriate, but they are pretty good. They are very good. No, it's okay for, it's okay, no, it's okay for you. It's probably not okay for me to market their lobster rolls. So, but they are pretty good. Luxury auto rental on sale. This is a good example of a interim use in an area on Bonnie Road, which is next to a major car facility, and it's proposal for, to take a building and renovate it for conditional use permit for motor, for vehicle sales. So, they will renovate a 6,000-square-foot building. They will completely renovate the building. They will meet parking lot landscape ordinance requirements, and they will meet current zone, sign requirements by taking, getting rid of a non-conforming sign. This is a picture of the existing, and this is a picture of proposed. We think it's a totally appropriate use in this location along that corridor, and the improvements in appearance are certainly appropriate. So, staff recommended approval, and planning commission subordered that. There was one abstention that was 10 to 0. There was no opposition. The Jump Trampoline Park is in the Lynnhaven Mall facility. It's next to Dave &amp; Buster's. It is an indoor recreation facility, does require a conditional use permit. That shows you the location inside. It will be totally inside, not exposed. It is a 12,000-square-feet. It'll include a jump space, basketball hoops, a foam pit, and a dodgeball court. The proposed exterior improvements include a new entrance, decorative awnings, wall sconces, and a glass front. This shows some of the improvements, which is, basically dresses up that side of the building. And that shows existing. So, it's a kind of leftover space, so we think it's an appropriate use and a very attractive improvement. It was, staff supported approval, and planning commission also unanimously approved it. John &amp; Randy Vogel Hunt Club Farm. This one is a little complicated, but overall, it's a very positive improvement to this area, which is well-known for hosting all kinds of activities, seasonal events, and camps. This shows you all the different parcels, and a parcel to be added to the conditional use permit is in the back shaded a darker yellow. So, they want to include a 2,000-square-foot aviary, expand the use of the Christmas barn to use it more year-round and summer camp. They will add bathrooms in the barn, and they will add the one parcel in the back, which will be included at the haunted hayride event. Here's a map of the improvements. They are clearly back, towards the back of the site, not visible from the road, consistent with the other activities that are going on in the area. Planning staff supported approval, and planning commission also unanimously approved the proposal. Okay, this was gone too easy. So, here we are at Princess Anne Meadows in the Princess Anne District. You can see the, all the AG1, AG2 striped areas are the proposed development. This development came to you, my understanding, it's about a year ago, under another name, five-mile stretch. Since then, the developers have acquired the land in the back. On the other side of the, the strip going down the middle is the Dominion Power right-of-way. So, they've acquired more land. This just gives you Princess Anne Road, Christopher Farms, and across the street is the Virginia Beach National Golf Course. So, it is a change of zoning from agriculture to conditional R10. It's 42 acres. It has about 12% open space, 29, excuse me, 12.3 acres of open space, 29% of the total area. But we do include the lakes in that, and some people question whether that's appropriate or not, so, but it still has forested area, 2.6 acres of lawn area and park, and 1.1 acres of land dedicated to the city between the London Bridge Road Expansion, which is proposed. You saw on the other slide related to the monopole. And it also has the primarily vehicular access from Princess Anne Road. The applicant has proposed 80 single-family lots, which is a density of 1.88. The minimum house size is, lot size is 10,000 square feet. House size is 2,400 to, and also a few one-stories at 2,150. This is a lot of information on this map, but this shows you, when we went to planning commission the first time, then it was deferred, we came back and detailed all these items. Gross development area is 42 acres. Number dwelling units is 80. That's less than two per acre. Open space is itemized, I just said. A key issue is they are dedicating right-of-way, dedicating right-of-way for London Bridge Road Extended as well as the southeastern Parkway. So, they're dedicating a total of 9.5 acres for future right-of-way expansion. They also included connectivity to the bike pedestrian trail on Princess Anne Road and interior trails of a half-mile and sidewalks of one mile. In addition, they've proposed a small park area, and they have proposed a typical but attractive street section of sidewalk, street trees, curb and gutter, and a total road section of 50 feet. The entrance is proposed to be brick and fenced and planting with monument signage. The houses have gone through a transition of materials, but they have proposed to do hardy plank and brick exteriors with a lot of details. So, they're attractive homes. Can't remember what the price point was, but it's over $400,000. So, there's a lot. I've kind of gone through it kind of quick, but there are a lot of issues as far as relationships to the neighbors, access from the road. It was, it was seven to three. It was not unanimous with one abstention. And, but there, and there was discussion. It says no opposition, but there was significant discussion from adjacent property owners. All right. Got any questions? No questions on that?
Hold on.
Stay tuned.
There's a lot of, I mean, it's the same comments I've been mentioning for two years.
It's gone too well, too easy, okay.
So many fragmented parcels around it, and the future access to Princess Anne Road really bothers me, and I don't see any difference really from what it was a year ago as far as the issues that I was concerned about, so.
Okay.
Rosemary?
Anything happening with the southbound express train?
We're supposed to be getting that model in a couple of months. Like, somebody, Jim?
January, yes.
In January from the ODU, because I think, you know, the future southeastern is really, really big in this area, whether we do it or not. I mean, I think that issue is just monumental here. Plus, you know, this is directly across Princess Anne Road from our future biomedical park, so I just don't want to see Princess Anne Road stripped out with a lot of curb cuts. I don't see this being coordinated.
How many curb cuts was that have?
Just one at this point, but you've got a lot of other fragments.
Right, right. Back further to the area map.
I guess you had it on the cell tower slide.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's a good slide.
We really tried to focus in on what Mrs. Henley is saying in terms of the, of all the other parcels that they have not been able to assemble, how would they be served if they were going to develop?
Sure. Here's the, the needed break is here. They would be required to build a turn lane, and there is an existing gravel access road to, that has a curb cut. So, they're proposed to consolidate that into one curb cut and provide a few, an access point to the existing gravel. So, more than likely, all of this could be accessible from, if developed from this area. In addition, we've got a connection potential to London Bridge Road Extended that is laid out in the plan, and, so this is proposed London Bridge Road Extended, and this is the southeastern Parkway. That give you the, but this gives you a lot of background on.
When we did the Princess Anne Corridor study, that curb cut wasn't supposed to be there. Everything was supposed to have access just on London Bridge Road Extended. And I just, you know, see that curb cut up there as being mighty close to that southeastern interchange. I don't know, I'm still, it's not something that I want to leave as my legacy, because I don't think that's going to be a good development.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I think we have one, I think we have.
Thank you for coming over, Barry, and Barry?
I'm not done yet. I know, I know I'm over 5:00, but I'm not done yet.
No, you're not. Oh, you're fine.
All right, all right. Now, we've got to go through 20 slides.
I'd already gone through, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. All right, the next one is James O. Hertz, Princess Anne District, and it's basically a subdivision variance to assemble two properties. There is, it's an inheritance, and the group wants to put the two properties together as one. There is very little development potential. It, there's three variances here. Lot width would be 0 instead of 150. It has no, it has access to the road by a, by a gravel road that is not, not direct access. The lot area that is developable is half an acre. One acre is usually required and has no access to a public street. However, when you look at it, it is a tremendously large piece of property with access to the water, but there is a very small area that is developable based on floodplain and other issues. So, we are proposing that this be permitted, and staff approved it, and planning commission approved it 11-0. The applicants say they have no intention at this time of development, but we have to assume that at some point, there would be some pressure to develop that lot. Or at least, that's my assumption.
Actually, the children don't live here, and they would just like to keep something here. There's, it's actually four parcels now, and those front two, this back parcel is really marked, but they would like to eventually maybe just have some little weekend house there that they could come and visit the area, so I think it's perfectly.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, the last one. The last one. And I'm bringing you something from the North End that's not controversial. I just want you to know that.
I don't believe.
It's an ordinance to amend, to amend the zoning ordinance to establish an overlay ordinance for special regulations. It would allow a duplex lot to be developed as two single-family homes. If you have a duplex lot, you lose no rights whatsoever. You can develop it totally in the way it is approved today. So, it has been requested by the North End Civic League, and it basically addresses 49th to 89th Street, allows duplex, as I said, to be developed as two single lots. The incentives in the ordinance reduce setbacks in some very small situations. In other words, right now, it's very difficult to build a porch or on the front of the building because of the setbacks requirements. This would allow a minimal intrusion into what was the setbacks into new reduced setbacks. In addition, it reduces by about two feet the side lot setbacks to be able to fit these things in and limits the height of the building. This shows you the, and I can't read that, but what is it? It's 35 feet, right?
The wall can be 25 feet. The height stays the same at 35 feet.
Okay.
It forces, you can still do three, two and a half stories instead of a full three-story straight-up wall, so, only if you do this option.
So, you keep.
Sounds great.
And this is, basically, this just shows you, instead of one duplex, it allows porches on the front, which should have, or the back, allows a different use of those lots to get two single-family homes in there rather than one duplex.
Great. Richard, I thank you. Any other questions or comments?
That is the end.
Any other business? Barry, could I meet, you and Doug meet me for a minute in my office, okay? All right, we'll adjourn. Thank you all very much.
For your attendance.